Okay, it's nine o'clock. Let's call this morning's meeting door with the moment silence. Thank you. First item is to approve the agenda.
I'd like to, I think maybe we, can we move number eight up to right under number four? Since these are going to be giving a report for M Card, she's probably going to be talking on that, revolving loan application. We just put that under number four, on eight.
Okay.
Then I'll make a motion to approve.
Support. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Through the minutes of August 1.
Would you approve the second?
Motion made in the second to approve the minutes of August 1. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Dave's not, Dave Sedevick's not here. Deanne's here. M Card report.
All right, projects working on the export conference is coming up on November 4 in Fairfield. Our speaker is lined up, so we're just getting wires completed this week and then we'll get those sent out to likely people who come to that conference. Educators in the workplace, we have the sound, we have the three classes. We had great turnout at all three, 34 and one that happens here in the house in the county. We visited Cloud, Castle Ridge, and InnoPower. And then we had MHP also speaking at Cloud during the lunch hour. So, good pictures and stuff on the next page. We had a great turnout, and hopefully continue that next year in near some kind of businesses. They really enjoyed that. They really like having teachers coming so that they can bring back to the classroom what jobs are available here. The labor shed, I've given you the regional one is complete. I requested some of our county ones, how the grounds changed, the colors were changed to match more of our logos, so that should be back this week. Otherwise, the labor sheds are finished and, yeah, we can just serve those in time if anyone needs to update the labor shed. I'll give you the county one, and we'll get that mail back to you this week. M Card board, our next meeting is September 20. At our last meeting, we stayed appointed to the new chair, vice chair, Mark is chair for 2016, 2017. Amy Brink is the vice chair. Barbecue, we had a great turnout. It was a hot evening as usual. It seems like on that Thursday night, we served around 500 people. Our board brought their members to help serve, which is always nice to bring a great crowd to help get the food out fast and quick. So, we had a good turnout. The M Card booth, we had a treasure hunt for the kids. They really enjoyed that. We actually ended up getting rather a lot on the booth display, so. Leadership team, we've had some great projects happen throughout the summer. The alley project is complete. Wifi in the park is complete now. We don't have some movies in the park yet before the summer ends, maybe early in the fall. Of course, the City Van concerts, we've had some expansion with just different events before yet, so that will be in there soon, but we've had some good things happen. We've all been home fun. We'll talk about the application that's submitted and then actually have one incorporated last week, so I might, we might have another one coming up too, but we'll prove, look at the one coming up.
Didn't have much base left in there as a band.
Oh, we had two, yes, two, it was 200 and some thousand?
Okay.
Yeah. We're over 200,000. Job fair, I'm working with Amy Brink from Iowa Works, November 10, from 4 to 6 at the Penn Central Mall will be the job fair for this year. Last year, we had a great turnout with 52 regional businesses come, so we'll have that again this year. Hopefully have good turnout as well. Young professionals, the next event will be on August 25 at Castle Ridge. We have invited young professionals, Appella also to attend, to just kind of expand our networking. So, that will be the next event. That's it, your report. So, the Golden One Month meeting met on August 2 to look at applications submitted by Knoxville Manufacturing. Was approved last Friday by the members. As I see the stipulations, there are 50,000 at the 2.625% for the nine years. And we have not received yet a list of the equipment, as that will be part of our quirel, so the committee will look at that yet and approve, you know, that piece of it before we move forward. We would want it to get on this agenda, as it's hoping to close the end of August. So, your approval upon the release approval after we get the list of equipment. They're going to be going Jim Washington, this business. It'll be a new business on South 7th Street, powder coating and storage, and he hopes to hire three employees.
What, which building is that?
It was old Laser Works building.
Okay.
It's kind of off by the cloud there.
It's not really a new business, it's kind of an extension of their current business.
Right. New business for us, I should say.
Yep.
Expansion of the current business. Any questions?
I'm sorry. Would you approve, second? Motion made in the second to approve the law revolving loans. Fund amount of $50,000, Knoxville Manufacturing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Deanne. Dave Sedevick.
Morning.
Thanks.
Okay, the first thing we've been spending quite a bit of time, the county bought a couple of acres of ground right next to Scotty Marsh here, familiar property. It's on southeast corner of the west side of Marsh there on Snyder Avenue. Place has been in disrepair since the 2008 flood. We're going to get it cleaned up and move our parking lot from where it's at by the bird view line south to that gravel road. So, we'll get the corner cleaned up, make it look better, and we'll actually, people have tried to use bird viewing line in the past. You know, you're in there and then somebody comes driving the parking lot right next to you scares everything away, so this way it'll be better so we reuse the areas as intended. And last year, when we had changed some of our policies, that west side used to be closed to hunting during duck season, but is open to hunting during all other seasons. It was some of the houses that are around there and everything, the county revised the policy, the conservation board did, to the west side of Snyder Avenue is going to be closed to hunting and be a refuge permanently, but a portion of the county ground of the side of Snyder Avenue still remain open. So, that's two things there. The addition of Russell Wildlife Area, spent quite a bit of time working on a wildlife habitat stamp grant. We actually scored really well, we got approved, but the state didn't have as much money in the fund as they thought they did. And so, we were offered the grant, but we had to turn it down for now, because it's, once you take any money from it, you can't reapply on the same project. There wasn't enough funding. You know, we didn't want to have to try to come up with the rest of it, so we can stay in there for two more funding cycles. It looks like they'll have more money again next funding cycle, or it's just an issue with their vendor, how they allocate the funds. Today, I'm also turning in a REAP grant application for the same project. So, I told them we've spent quite a bit of time on that for the, one of these two grants have come through. The habitat stamp grant scored extremely high, so I was happy with that. The board decided to do a policy change for the camping of our primitive areas such as Robertson, Glendale, Access, Porcas, and we're going to start charging a non-small amount, maybe $10 to camp there. We have to go through the whole public notice process, everything, and these won't take them back until next year. But, we're doing that. Caldwell Park, the big updates is, they've worked with the Freedom Rock group and they're damaged, a few more bricks to sell, and those are going to be all sold out. And on September 11, the Friends Conservation is going to have what they're going to call their Mammoth Day, and it's going to be a raise awareness for the park and try to do a fundraiser. They're going to do a 5K run, and the region auxiliary is going to do the dedication of the initial flag raising ceremony at the Freedom Rock. That's Sunday, it'll be 2 to 5, and the race and the other events will take place after all the Freedom Rock activities, Freedom Rock activities starting too. So, it's great to see all the different groups cooperate out there to try to make things happen. And then, last year, I think we talked about it last month, what are you about, where field day, we're changing the format in September 24. And anybody that's been there before, you go around in groups, and we're starting to lose kids from going to it because they have soccer, or baseball, or football, or something. And they don't want to have to try to catch up with the group halfway through the day or only go to part of it. So, this year, we're going to have a lot more stations, and it's going to be ITs or turn free for all.
Free for all.
But, we're going to allow the, the kids to go to wherever, whatever stations they want to, there'll still be career registration, all of that, but there'll be a lot more activities available and they'll be able to pay the tuition bucks.
Would that camping policy change for primitive camping areas? We not charge anything before that?
No, we are. The only time, place we charge is when you go to the accident.
And so, why is, I mean, we've had a record number of revenues for the past couple of years, why would we need to get more revenue?
Well, it's gaps, I'd say. And actually, it's not so much about revenue, it's that the policy is people can stay for 14 days. We're getting a lot of people that are staying that are just trashing the areas, and we don't have the mechanism right now. You know, they've got their 14 days, we can't like kick them out if they're causing problems. So, now by charging a fee, we have one more thing to try to, if they have to pay the fee, then that gives us a legal leg to stand on.
Don't we have some kind of a policy that would have to, you know, as far as like the maintaining your area and, you know, littering all over, what have you?
Well, it's not so much the litter, it's turned into squine. And we have to find out that they're there, they have 14 days, and we have to have them vacate, which sometimes takes shares part of the help to make that happen. And then, they're going from one park to another park, to another park. Sometimes they're looking under the bridge, and they know theirs.
So.
We've had a lot of issues.
So, it's more of a homelessness type of a?
It's, I think it's, yeah, it's more of a societal problem versus a.
Where are they going to go, if we kick them out of the parks?
I'm not trying to kick them out, I'm trying to make them respect the parks. And I think if they've got skin in the game, that, that'll do.
I understand the intent behind it, I don't agree with it.
Well, that's fine. But, we're the ones that have to go out and try to enforce right now and enforce it at policy.
I understand, I just, I think that when you, they're going to be displaced from where they're saying it now, it's going to cause problems other areas, so we'll have to address it someday.
Anything else?
I don't have any.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Carol change, Sonny Scott.
Seasonal part time help for September for the three week period, Sarah Hall and Yan, and then a new one, Carol Huff.
Two.
Yes, Sarah Hall and Carol. Always had two before, but Carol's.
Yep. Make the motion that we hired the seasonal help, Sarah Hall and Carol Huff with Sonny's request.
Support. Motion made, supported to hire these two ladies. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Troy Bemus. Oh, no, here, I got the wrong guy. Darren, I jumped ahead one. Court.
Well, we're, we're asking to redo courting in our office out there. I think I sent you an email, do you guys have a copy of what we sent?
Oh, okay.
Are we here for discussing any questions or?
No. You got two bids, one was from Modern Floor Covering, the other was from Materials by Val.
That's right.
So, this Modern Floor Covering, what does that cover removal, whatever's on there now?
Yeah, we tried to compare the two a little bit, it looks like they're covering the same things. It looks like there was a couple of things where Modern Floor Covering, the floor prep might be extra, but I think once they get in there and see what's underneath, what their carpet is, they'll know what that is.
Okay. Is it glued down or?
It was, yeah. It's glued down to tile.
Okay. Because they, the second quote has $1,000 for just that, approximately. So, I don't know if that's going to be added on to Modern Floor Covering.
We kind of talked about that, where, where we want to keep it under, at or under what we budgeted for, so if we have to do it ourselves, whatever, to keep it within our budget, that's what we'll plan on doing, so.
Okay.
What's the, what's the exact dollar amount on Modern Floor?
340121.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I make the motion that we accept a bid for Modern Floor Covering, to let, allow these IT and JIS departments to replace their boards.
Support. Motion made, supported to accept a vote from Modern Floor Covering for 340121 to carpet the IT room. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning, Troy.
Got a couple quotes on the handrails on Paul Brown, the courthouse, they're getting in pretty sorry shape. All the rest of the way is cemented. And going with Co-Lin and Kelderman's, just kind of had them come up with what they wanted to, I guess. And Co-Lin's is going to be solid while the railing with just a pad that I can bolt down instead of going in the concrete. They figured it so they can miss the existing hole, you know? So, I have some more good passing too. And then, Kelderman's went a little bit farther and put some decorative laser pieces on there, and Kelderman's all holds together. So, you said that way, if you have the rail for us, if they cut the prints out there, they just make a new one and power it, but it's bolted on. They're a little more, but I think that's high, I guess.
I didn't see the number for Kelderman's.
7,500, I wasn't sure if like.
Co-Lin gave two numbers, they gave one for powder coating and one for just regular.
Yeah, adding to that, quote powder coats, since Kelderman's got a powder coat, they were just a few. But, one's all welded together, and then the other, I think. The long front one out on the ring, 42 pieces, right at that bend, say it wasn't going to mess with the angle, just make two that butt it up there. They're going to be pretty long.
Have you had a bad section? This other one's a little more versatile, if you have.
Yeah, you just unfold it, you unfold many.
You have to hold the place a little bit.
I sent you some pictures, I couldn't get them to print this morning, but they just got that good stuff, that fits. Courthouse and this square, I guess, they will go times.
Have any recommendation on what you?
I guess I'd go with one that has that good stuff on it and puts together, you know, it's more of this, kind of fits a square a little nicer. And all the posts are square, and then the rail will be round, so it'll manage.
Like, there's some value in having the ability to replace a bad section in Dan Root, you don't have to spend 7,000, maybe it's just a.
Just straight powder coat.
Yeah. Yeah. I think there's, there's value there.
This Kelderman's going to be powder coated?
I'd like to move that we accept the Kelderman's bid for the handrails. Based on the closure recommendation there.
I'll support it. What they did, did, those little detailed pieces, they looked pretty nice. Applied quite a bit to it, so.
Okay, any further discussion? Motion made, supported to afford the handrail replacement to Kelderman Manufacturing for $7,500. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Deanna Augustin?
I guess we're here today to seek a variance on the setback ruling. We would like to build an addition on my son's house. The address on his house, if you want to make note of that, is 300790th Street. And it's currently, the house sits within 100 feet, but is 92 feet approximately from the center of the road. If you look on the next page, what we're proposing is a, is to be about 62 feet from the center of the road. The next page shows the garage, which sits east of the house, and it is about 44, 45 feet from the center of the road. Those are existing structures that are already. If you look onto the next page, that's going to show kind of the layout of the house. I've got our contractor here, I'd like to have him kind of attest to the fact that there. Which direction is logical to build to, so. This is Don Patterson.
Okay.
You can see the house is just basically a rectangle, on the back of the house, there's three bedrooms, a bathroom, one in front of the house, where it's supposed to be addition, is a living room and kitchen. In the back, we've got a well on the west, you've got the septic system. So, going to the south is the less complicated, and structurally, it makes the most sense.
The last page there does diagram the, where the septic field is, and the well, and LP tank, which, all those things would be obstacles if we tried to go the other direction. Any questions for me on where we're going?
How old's the garage? The garage is there?
Probably, probably in the 50s maybe.
Wasn't a point that you were making from, you know, heading that to the, you're asking for less, like, or less of a variance?
Yeah.
Than what's already there?
From my perspective, I don't think the point of the ordinance was to limit construction on existing homes, to limit that.
Okay.
So, I'm okay with this, and I don't know if it takes a, if we can disapprove of variance, or if we need to do ordinance amendment to.
We can approve the, I think we can approve the variance as a board, that's what, that's what's in the, that's what's in the ordinance. We have final say, I guess, is what it says. It's very low traffic road too, also, I mean.
Yeah, even if it wasn't, it doesn't change any of the sightlines from, which from the, that's east, isn't it?
Yeah.
Coming from the east.
Yeah.
There's very little blocking, they come from the west if any, because I don't think that they're, I don't think it was causing any harm. If we can do it procedurally, if we can approve the variance to get it done that way, I guess.
We just, yeah, we just want to prove it now, it's fine.
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve the variance to building setback for Augustine concerning 3,790th Street.
Did we get that address right? What was the address on?
Did it say 300790th Street?
It's a serial search.
Support. All right, motion made, in the second to issue a variance to Augustine's son on the addition of the house at 30790th Street. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. And do I understand, do I need to build a, do I need to?
You need to apply for residential building, right, I go with an addition, so talk to the engineer's office, has those.
All right, thank you, please, thank you.
Dave?
Which one do they want to start with? I want to start with the project agreements, funding.
Vacation pay.
Vacation pay.
Vacation pay.
Pro-rata vacation pays them for?
Retirement pay.
Yeah.
Okay. Looking at the different items. Are, anything that says retirement or resignation is on the last day of employment? Question of that, I didn't find anything else in state codes. The old union contract, which was decertified as of June 30th, had a pro-rata clause in it. The courthouse. Does not have the same terminology. Employment records will reflect the last day of work, it's the day of termination, you receive pay through that last weekend, and leave is based off of that. So, you have two different ones. The union contract that was in force stated it was based on pro-rata. How the county figures is that you have to go a whole year before they figure that you assumed or earned it, I don't know, because normally, we don't allow people to take leave ahead of what they actually have on the sheets. So, it becomes a question of what, what is a county in a non-union court, how do they base their, their vacation? Do you have to work the entire year to earn that prior year? Or do you work part of the year to be credit for part of the year? That's, that's really the only issue there. If it was still in the union contract, it would be spelled out, pro-rata. But, the last day of work was the end of the union, after they had decertified. There's where your issue is. There's not a whole other ways to look at it other than that, and there's no real clear cut definition of how leave is accumulated in the county handling. It doesn't say if it's pro-rata, if it's annual, or whatever else, which I think if this is an issue, it needs to be addressed in here, so that there's specifics. Otherwise, it leaves it to a gray area. Which would then, put it in your gentleman's hands.
There were a couple of other scenarios, I guess, that we asked about. Do you know anything? I mean, you watched any of those out? One of them was deciding a, maybe they just. I mean, you watched any of those out. One of them was deciding, uh, a, uh, maybe a, just last day of employment.
Uh, we still would have records showing.
Let her run it out.
Then he worked after that. He can't come back to work until, it was a hundred twenty days for IFRS. You cannot come back to work for that. So there's differences.
On that way, I'm saying.
Yeah, the other two are basically out. This is the only way.
Well, I don't know. One of the things we had tried to do is level out the union contract and the county handbook. And I don't know if we could go to pro-rata beginning for fiscal year seventeen and. If that would equal that out, take care of it or not, I. It'd be equal. Other than that, I really don't know.
We have another employee that resigned that would be similar. And then we had one that resigned when their union was still in contract. Cause we have to deal with that. And it was done pro-rata for the one that did retire in two thousand thirteen before it got here.
Under the contract?
Under the contract, yes sir.
Wonder if that would affect other county employees?
It would. It would.
I mean, from now.
What do you mean?
That have already. That have already resigned recently.
As of?
Like Sony had one?
Do you remember?
Yeah.
Was that after July? Was it, was it before July?
Was that just, I brought up because they had a contract prior. I think maybe that's the only issue that's different between that and the common courthouse was set up. Is that they added in a contract prior.
We had any other resignations since July first?
Off my head, I can't think of any, but.
And a little bit in Don Smith's. You know, had he known this, I would, I would assume he would not have resigned when he did.
When I asked him that question, he said, yeah, he would have worked until his anniversary date.
He was operating on the, on what he assumed was a. He didn't know the change was coming.
The unfortunate thing was they decertified in the middle. What he did is we extended through the contract because there was no renegotiation of the contract. So nothing was done as of July one when the new fiscal year started. So part of it was just done by, because of the change. Not sure how this would all work out, not even knowing if we would have had a contract in place by the third year to, and it made it very difficult. Since they had put in their resignation prior.
Yeah, the timing wasn't there. That could be there. But they took care of.
Do what?
Well, you proposed.
Yeah.
The exact language you're leading on proposal. Sounds to be fair to try to make things even.
See any immediate concerns from an HR standpoint of?
Sorry, I didn't hear.
If we did pro-rata for all county employees beginning fiscal year seventeen, do you see that being an issue? From a HR standpoint, or? Maybe, don't make any defense. I mean, I, there's probably a lot of people that do wait until their anniversary date to terminate anyone.
Retirements aren't very close. But if people knew upfront that if the annual, if your leave for vacation, well, they're, and the courthouse was done on the annual, that way people would know. If it bargained back in or whatever into a union contract, if it would be in black and white. Right now you've got a situation where it changed in the middle of what someone actually did based on your contract.
Or are we gonna prove a one-time exception for, for one-time exception? Special circumstances? I don't know.
I think that would be fair.
We saw Gilchuck and, uh, two other employees. One retired or resigned and went to another job. Gave their notice and the other one gave his notice too.
Was that after July first?
Yes, sir. One was the same day that Chuck, uh, had been, or Don had been shut. Hanson and then Scott Skibber, who took another job, was in, back during when the contract was still in play. And he is covered by a bargain.
So for Don and what was the other one?
Chuck Hanson, have any time coming?
Not.
Very little, did he?
Yeah, he had just got his new year in. Scott would, I'm not sure of Scott's birthday or his anniversary date, but he would have been denied by the middle.
The handbook doesn't specify retirement. It just specifies if they leave.
It says, uh, two weeks written from resignation or, you know, if they don't leave a two-week notice, then you have to browse down to it. But on this, it does basically say you can be, you can retire, resign, or be terminated.
It says you get all your vacation paid out, but it just doesn't specify it's pro-rata.
Right. That's the only difference between the two documents. So it might be helpful to have that you have to go the entire year to do it, or however you want to go about doing it. So the language is consistent.
Okay. Motion on this, I'll, I'll like motion to, uh. I want to order this. Pay Donnie Smith for his.
Accumulated.
Accumulated vacation.
Pro-rata vacation is was, and that would be the same for Scott.
As was, as was in.
You will do that for all three of them at one time, or do we have to do that?
We're just doing this for Donnie Smith today.
All right.
Okay.
That's fine.
That's what I would, that's what my motion would be. I don't know how you're gonna say that.
Pay his retirement benefit based on his pro-rata leave accumulation as per, per a union contract. Per a union contract.
I'll support it, just so we can continue to talk about it. So when did Chuck leave?
The same day, July eight.
Or did he have, did either one of them have knowledge of?
I don't think they did. Cause when I talked to Donnie, I talked to him at length and he said if he'd know. But we had that time when he didn't know whether it'd be a contract or not. So how, you really can't advise person based on that.
Then what they just got, what they just got with?
Uh, his was back. Uh, he's been gone since last fall, I believe, or whenever, or the spring somewhere. I can't remember.
So he did fall under the union contract?
He fell under the, Skyler, he's given us the only one that fell directly under the contract.
So he's not even up for discussion?
No, he would be done that way.
Chuck didn't have a whole lot.
I don't believe so. I think his anniversary date was in June or something.
He had very little coming. There wouldn't be much.
Much of any?
So if we just took care of Donnie for this?
For this one.
Extended, extended, whatever. Hopefully they'll have the union contract in force.
Well, with Scott's, if we can figure his at the next meeting and present it, we would have his as well.
We don't need Scott's.
He fell under the old contract.
Oh, was he paid that, was he paid out that way?
I can't answer that. I don't know.
Should have been paid out towards whatever.
Yeah, it should have been paid out under pro-rata.
He should have died. I don't know. He had questions, but I haven't, he hasn't talked to me about it, so.
Well, if there's a problem, he just needs to be paid out whatever the union contract says. So I'll just work with.
All right.
See to figure that out, but.
You want to amend the motion to include Chuck Hanson, or you want to just vote the ways for, for Donnie Smith? That would be my position. Chuck Hanson's will be very few dollars, and I'm sure of that.
Well, I mean, it's still, one's entitled to it and the other one's probably entitled, even though it's less, but.
Yeah.
I'll move to include, I'll move to amend the motion to include Chuck Hanson.
Second.
So we need to vote on the amendment.
Motion made and seconded to include Chuck Hanson in the amendment. Do the motion. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Any other discussion on this?
That, that was the amendment we voted on, I think. Cause I was saying I gotta vote on that.
Now we gotta, now we gotta vote on the next one.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
I don't.
Motion made and seconded to pro-rata vacation pay to Chuck Hanson and Donnie Smith. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed. Motion carried. Road project.
This is the financial agreement for federal government, state, the project STP SCO sixty-two, parentheses eighty-eight IB dash sixty-two. Which is our G five T thirty-three project, which is scheduled, uh, we have, this is for the funding. There's four copies that have to be signed. So then we can turn them back into the state and then they process them. And that would be our federal funding for that project, which I think we have one point two five billion for that.
Is this, uh, is that ready to design and everything done on that?
Yeah, we are pretty much done with the design. We've already done, we've got our NEPA shovel clearance. So we're moving along at a, at a good pace.
Does, does that involve the redesign of that intersection?
No, we'd have to take over twenty, twenty plus feet out of that hill to the south to get five hundred foot. Cause the hill drops so fast.
So we're not, cause I was always under the impression that we were.
We looked at it, um.
First I've heard we're not doing that.
The thing about it is that to do that, we would either have to relocate the road all the way around, probably going around the hills to the west. The only place we could get side distance. And a twenty-five foot, we'd have, we'd have a tremendous amount of dirt we'd have to waste. Cause we wouldn't have need for the bill. We, the project would have been strictly cost prohibitive to do it for what we had in it. And we still would get marginal side distances. But we are looking at putting signs. We're still gonna use the same signings, but we're gonna stop the traffic going, you know, the way it is. But we're still gonna let the northbound, or the southbound traffic on thirty-three go through, but we're gonna stop the other two. So that allows trucks to turn safely left or anybody wanting to come and go south. Everybody has to stop at that intersection. It's, there's no other way of doing it because of the way the hills are there. You'd have to either take an awful lot of hill or completely move the road to a whole different location. We tried everything and there's just no way to do it without moving a tremendous amount of dirt and wasting a lot. And then we'd be talking about a price probably close to twice as much. Because we looked at all that and there's a lot of dirt that would have to be wasted. We'd have to find a place for that and that would have delayed the project because you'd have to find, go through all the environmental regulations to find a place to put it. Or splat the slopes and we'd be falling in wetlands and that would be tough to do.
So how is that intersection gonna work? I don't understand what you just said.
He's gonna stop traffic coming from pure.
Traffic.
What he's proposing. I don't know if I'm in agreement with it.
Easiest way. T thirty-three come, this is T thirty-three. This is G five. Goes up, this is T thirty-three. This is G five. And this is G five. We'd had to have taken either all this hill off or move this completely over here to get around this for side distance. Cause there was no way of getting any side distance. The height of this hill here, we would have to remove it all just to be able to see anything. Plus go down about twenty-five feet there just to get to any kind of side distance of five to seven hundred feet in this area. So what we did is we're gonna have a stop condition here. And a stop condition there. You'll have stop ahead signs and you'll have flash, you'll, you'll have the revol, or the light on top of the stop sign here, possibly on both sides. That will allow unstructured turns this way from T thirty-three and the same for trucks going this way when it stops here. Problem with this is the grade is too steep to do anything. If we cut this down, we gotta cut all this down to make the site work out right. Or fill this, we'd have to fill this whole area to get it up high enough to see anything. So after we got all the survey done, the only thing we could do is maintain where it was, but we'll have to stop it and stop it. We'll add one stop condition. We're gonna widen this radius out, same with this one here, so people can try and turn that way. But that's the only thing we can do, cause you'd have to be cut and clear down into here and you'd have to either fill all this or get rid of all this hill. We have no place close that we can take the dirt to get rid of, cause we would have way more dirt than we would have any need for. The other thing that we're looking at doing is down here, we're going with the wider pavement. Down here. Fourteen feet from center line out. It'll be striped at eleven, rubble striped out. Cause the accidents we've had that were serious were here, here, and here. We had two binders here. And when I talked to the safety fund people, they didn't think the ends, these were enough to warrant spending a lot of extra safety. And the most I would have got was a half a million for safety funds. We have still been upside down quite a ways in that project. So the only thing we can do is you got your stop ahead, you got your stop bars here, you're gonna have your lights here, your flags, your signs, same over here. This will be able to go straight if they need to. This will stop and this will stop. The only way that we could do it, still fit within the design guidelines unless we took this entire hill out. We could, we'd also had to have done this to the curb, because this curb is too sharp. And right now we're pushing the three hours as hard as we can to get it into budget. And I looked at, cause I looked at every different way on this. We could do this by, we either add up, go clear out around here. And that's why I would have this far ground, which would have been the only.
I thought you were talking about kinda going that way.
This here, this by taking twenty feet out of here, it'd have been put back up in here with your cut slopes.
So what's the design there? It's awful to estimate. That's gonna be more confusing than, it's even worse.
Well, yeah, when we went, and I had the safety team out here, we looked at it and where our accidents have been, have been on this curb coming down here. And they have all the drive runoff and the same down here. So we changed, we put the shed runs down here to address this. And here, like I said, we'd have to get rid of twenty some odd, twenty-five feet of dirt, two twenty, twenty-five foot to get it down. Then you're gonna have to slope it up back far enough so you don't have a snow trap in it.
Aren't you gonna be stopping semis on that, on that grade?
Not, not this one.
Well, no, going up on G five T going.
This way.
They don't have to stop?
Yeah, they'll have to stop here.
Well, if it gets backed up, aren't you gonna be stopping semis on that grade there?
They'll have stop ahead signs and stuff here too.
Or semi on that, middle winner? Could stop behind and have to.
Wait, that or we'd have to change the whole scope because.
Well, that's what we originally talked about. It's the first time I've heard we're not gonna.
No, we had looked at doing different things here. We looked at this.
And that was always the plan. That's what it always proved. This is the first I'd ever heard of doing it this way. I mean, all those, we told people that we're gonna redesign it. That's all taken out. I don't know whose authority that was taken out on. The way I'm approving this design. You need to have, I think you need to have sit downs with people in the community, just like we do with other DOT projects, other state projects. And do you get some feedback on what it needs to look like?
Well, for the money that we have budgeted for the project, we couldn't do all that. Because we still have. Because we still have other roads that need work, and we have, I'm trying to split it out enough so we can get roads fixed, G-71.
You didn't discuss this change when we approved our five-year plan last time.
It had paving and grading, we are doing some, but not a lot. We're going to take a little bit of that hill off, but not that much. Because you don't gain enough, but if we get it down too deep, we're going to have to do a lot of overexcavating. And we're trying to do that as, so we can get the project built and still keep it in the budget.
I don't see the point of stopping direction in two directions now instead of just one.
Well, that's what we, that's the only thing we had the funds for, sir.
Well, it's a big deviation from what we talked about before.
Well, when we got, we thought, before we had any of the actual shots, we first looked at it, we could take a few feet out and have all kinds of distance. It's not there, this hill going to the southwest drops off so quick that you really can't. And we had that signed at thirty-five mile an hour all the way up that corner.
Maybe we should have had, maybe we should have had these discussions before you bring it here, before the agreement to be signed.
And it would have been my mistake, sir, I apologize. Just trying to get it done within budget, and still be able to fix it, put a decent surface out on there instead of an overlay or anything else.
You will have everybody in the township calling you and complaining about that design of that intersection.
This is what's proposed. I'll make a motion that we, we, uh, sign these agreements. Say hi to the Department of Transportation.
I'll second it. For the purpose of discussing it, after, I mean, hearing Mike's concerns, do you have any hesitation going forward with the design, the way we can have it now, or do you think that there could be more? Could we make it a better plan?
We are looking at taking some off the south hill, we're just not looking at going down twenty-five feet to try to get some side distance. Problem with it is, is you've got such steep grades coming up to it, plus this deep curve that goes into it. There's no way to line that up, even the safety folks say with that, go completely redo that entire intersection, and you're talking milling this. Because you're going to have to cut through all that, and you'll be building all new road, and you'd be building all new, you'll have to buy all that right of way, most likely to the west, to take that entire hill down, which is fine, and then it makes the traffic on T-33 chain turn. So then it'll be tough to make that come in at a ninety-degree angle. Right now, you still have everything at right ninety-degree angles, T-intersection. And normally, when you have that, unless you just, from what they were telling me, if you change the orientation of the T, it causes more issues, and if you leave the T the same way it was, people get used to driving with that.
Why do you change the control, why don't you just leave the traffic going north-south then? Traveling this jacket all around, no.
The only thing, if we looked at adding here...
Northbound traffic has to stop.
No. Yeah, this traffic here.
Yeah, that's complete, you just said.
And here. The only thing is, is the concern was the traffic turning here, was what you told me, right? Left-hand turn traffic off of T-33, because if these people don't stop, they're sitting ducks. And you got the same traffic going south. If they don't stop, these people are going to flock. So if you stop up here and here, that makes the turning traffic, which we have eight hundred this way, twelve hundred this way, twenty-two hundred this way. Uh, you got less than two hundred feet of side distance, but the truck and trailer, to go and stop from this here, you can't get out of anybody's way if they're not slowing down here. Our drivers will tell you the same thing, the hardest turn to make here is this one. Because you're coming this way, you've got to turn across up this really star, sharp hill to get away from anybody. That means, because it's a narrow road, and it's a narrow T, you've got nowhere to go. And if there's someone sitting here, you've got to swing out around and make the turn. But if they're coming through there, they only see them from this point to that one, it's the only chance they've got to see them. So you only have this line of sight to stop if someone's turning from here, you've got to stop them here. There's no other way around it. If you want to make this intersection safe, the only way you can do that is by stopping this traffic, past it, unless you go up and build a road over here.
You just said we don't have an accident problem.
We've only had two mics.
Yeah, so then why are we just doing a complete redesign for two mics?
We're not, we're just taking...
It's a, you will, do you know how many, this intersection has been like this for eighty years?
So you don't want the stop sign here, you just want people to...
If you're not going to do, regrade everything or redo it like we had talked about, then just leave it going north-south, and don't change it.
What I'm trying to do is address all these issues.
You're going to, you're going to make more issues than you're solving. You're creating problems that aren't really there. You're going to... Trying to do too much, we're just going to make it end up being worse.
Well, that's what books and stuff are telling us that we need to do when we're recreating. And I'm trying to do it according to what the design manuals tell me to do. Because I have to look at what I have to work with, and what I can afford to do, and what I need to do to address these things, and there's only certain ways you can do it. If I change this, it's, no matter what changes in here, it's going to change something. If you, you know, if you're that concerned about this, put around about middle and let people go around. That is one way that they do use us, because then this traffic would not have to stop. This traffic would have to yield anybody coming around this way, and so this way. But you're at fifty-five mile an hour area, and that would be a major change of philosophy. But it is an option, and we looked at this option.
You don't look at it with us. I'd like to have had a little input into how we designed this, from the board supervisors.
Well, we're trying to do it according to what the books are telling us to do, it's a sign me.
Well, you can do whatever you want, but I guarantee, I'll, I'll be gone, but you guys are going to feel a lot of... I mean, it's going to be, you're going to, you're going to have fifteen calls by the end of the week.
There's no way to fix this without major, major road change on us together.
But if you're not going to do a major road change, why even bother doing the change of control?
Try to eliminate any potential possibilities there.
No, you're just going to create more accidents then. I mean, you're taking traffic which is coming off the river bottom, going up the hill, making that turn, and then you're putting stop on it.
Because already at this point, they've had a thirty-five mile an hour regulatory speed zone sign for years of that hill. We have rumble strips here. They've been there for years. So they know that there's an intersection of concern up there.
And isn't there a grade on the one coming from the south, those people?
There's also rumble strips here.
Yeah.
And there are rumble strips...
I know there's rumble strips.
Going this way or this way?
Yeah.
This is like, there's a little knoll here that it goes down. The worst place for, for stopping traffic, because this hill goes down so deep, it's from the north going south on T-33, if you go to the right, it'd be hard to get going again.
It does, we have a couple cars backed up, if you're first in line...
If you were in this area down here, is possible.
Yeah, it is possible, and you know what happens when there, when there's ice? That's exactly what's going to happen. When it's bad weather, that's exactly what's going to happen. You're going to back up with cars there, and then you have semis there trying to go up that hill?
So you're just going to have to come through here and not stop, and make a right-hand turn then? Take this out, just make a right-hand...
If you're not going to regrade it, I don't think there's any point of changing the control of what you have there. That's, I think you'll end up redoing it anyway.
Well, the only other thing would be to put a turn lane here, a specific turn lane.
That's what we talked about.
We could still probably work that in, with this lane here. But then if they're going across here, then we either got to put a little channel, channel island in there, which is no big deal. And you already have your traffic supposed to be slowed down to thirty-five. And even now, they have to slow down enough to stop, so if you've got that kind of traffic, you're sitting there too. And this is not wide right through here, we're going to widen this out. So that there would be more room to be able to get in there, and also try to round this curve out here a little bit so that they would have an easier way to go to nowhere. We're not trying to change it all, we're just trying to modify it. Try to answer these problems at this intersection. And try not to have this problem here, and try to slow this traffic down so they don't get this intersection at fifty-five. Which no matter how many signs you put up here, until you stop them, they're going to go through there at fifty-five, every night, on time. And that's the problem, people don't slow down, fall in sign, they shoot through there at fifty mile an hour. If you're trying to make a turn, you can't get out of the way. You can't stop people from driving faster or whatever than what they want to drive, unfortunately. So we're trying to do the next best thing, still keep it within a budget, so that we can do the rest of the work that we have to do in the county. And that's the reason that we went this route. Otherwise, we would have had this all to you months ago, but we kept trying to find a different way to do it.
Do you think that the turn lane or roundabout is a possibility?
Roundabout would be a dramatic change. People have a hard time adapting, and with the truck traffic, roundabouts are kind of, you either got to go to a double lane, then people get confused as to what lane they're supposed to be in. It does work, especially at high, right angle impact locations, they work effectively well. You have to slow down to go through them. But you always have a handful or a percentage that don't.
Is there, is there other money available, which you use?
The only other thing, but we don't have the crashes there to prove anything, we have two minor crashes, unless you've got majors or fatalities, that safety money will go to places where they have a number of fatalities, and high-dollar incidents. That's the whole thing with working through the different funding, I've been trying to get different funding for this, to add on to it so we could do more work to it. But there's, when I sent it in, I said, well, there's not anything here, two minor crashes, that's not going to be enough to warrant, so you do, try to figure out a way to do it, maintain the traffic flow, but still provide some more insurance and safety.
I think so there's a half million dollars that was available for safety.
Up to, yes.
And how much are we going to take advantage of that?
I was going to try to ask for the whole thing.
Okay.
But I had to do, I have to show a major accident or major, and we don't have it at that intersection. All of our major crashes are separate.
What about the turn lane?
Well, we could still work the turn lane, and if we have enough right of way in there, we'd have to steepen the slopes up a little bit, but we can widen that to make the right-hand turn around.
Where they wouldn't have to stop?
There might be a little bit of right of way we'd have to buy on the southeast side, but...
If you're going straight, you'd have to stop, but if you're turning right, you could go, they could just go ahead?
Well, if you don't change it, don't put a stop condition in there, and the traffic want to go east, go east. They want to go north, the only thing is, is traffic going west and then south.
There'd have to be a stop sign going north, but as far as, if you put a turn lane in?
Yeah, that eastbound traffic can go around it.
With the yield sign?
Yeah, you'd have to have a right turn only sign.
And they would have to stop?
The north, straight northbound is...
They would, but the one's turning right with that. So that kind of alleviates some of the, maybe a...
Well, like I said, the, the accident point has never been at that intersection, which I couldn't understand, and I, I brought them out here, we had them out here a couple times, and they looked at it, and they said, there should be, but there's no accident history to back it up. And so, you start looking at different things, and they have a list of best practices that they use, that have accident reduction values of so many, and then they have the costs associated with it, so on and so forth. But without completely redoing an entire intersection, or if they had a fatality there, then I would have any trouble getting the money for it. So it's hard to come to anybody unless you know you for sure you can or can't get the money without going through the whole thing. And with G-71, we've got other roads that are getting bad. I got to find some way to try to address all these things, not just the one on us. So I apologize if I've done you guys wrong, and I've been trying to do it, do it the most economic and best way.
A right turn lane would alleviate some of the concern about the traffic that was still through the street.
And there is enough room in there to do that, we can steepen the ditches up, there's not that much drainage that we have to deal with there, and we already have the shoulder width at that intersection. To make a turn lane there without very little grading, and the dirt that we would take off to the south there to try to get an additional hundred foot or so of side distance, we could use that to build out the, the wedges to make your turn lanes.
Does that need to be, does that make it a different project?
No, as long as we don't change the general scope of the project, we're fine. Because we have, they don't have the final design yet, but we have X amount of dollars that we have. So whatever dollars we come up with, this is the only amount of total money you're going to get.
So anything else is going to come out of there?
Comes out ours. Either our part of the market account or our local.
So how does traffic coming from the Sharon, who goes to that stop sign, who sees traffic stopping coming from the south, won't they assume it's a three-way stop?
You're Sharon.
Yeah, coming from the Sharon way, on G5T.
The only way you know for sure if it's an all-away, because then you'd have a three-way or a four-way sign, you'd put that up the bottom of the sign.
But you said traffic coming from the pure way doesn't stop, it keeps going through.
From this way?
Yes. Yeah, but, so somebody coming from out of town, who doesn't, who's never been in that intersection, they see some of the crossway traffic stopping, aren't they going to assume it stops in both directions?
Yep. That's the hard thing about a T, because T, you've got one through lane, your T-bar is your through lane.
But it's only stopping going in one direction?
Stopping two at the three.
Good luck, I think you just made a intersection that was relatively safe, that could do some improvements, much less safe.
We could leave the, I mean, but that's what safety stuff says, is you look at the stop sign there when you have an incident like that, that's what you've got to do with them. I, I'm just going off of what they have in the design manual, we don't...
Well, maybe put the manuals away and look at this intersection, it's a little common sense, because the way that is configured is awful, my estimation.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. I think the discussion has been discussed.
I have another question, Mike, what would you, I mean, what would make it better than your...
Well, for one, to have a meeting with people that live in that area, it's going to be a major change. Have a sit-down with them, talk about what you're talking about doing, what your budget is, what you can't do. Get some feedback, and get them to buy into it a little bit. Discuss all the various options.
If they say, well, we don't want to follow anything that's designed, I've got to follow it. If I got federal funds, I'm like, into what I can do, and the type of design work I can put in there. When you get federal money, you've got to play by the rules of the book.
You can't, or it's going to be our money, yeah.
Yeah, if you, if you don't want federal money, you can...
But as far as the control of the intersection, you can't have a conversation with people? I mean, if the Iowa DOT can do it, we can't do it as a...
If you, if you think the stop sign, that one stop sign is that much of an issue, for a hundred and fifty dollars to put that sign in, I can take the sign out, but...
We can have that discussion after it's done, and look and see how it lays out.
I mean, all I'm trying to do is look at all the different scenarios for accidents there. I'm not trying to make anybody mad, I'm not trying to tick anybody off, I'm just saying, okay, I've got an intersection with four side distance, and a high ADT traffic, and a heavy traffic traffic. How do I handle this? If we're worried about people getting stuck, we'd have to level a lot of these hills out, because you're going to get stuck on a lot of these hills, we got forty mile an hour curse people driving around seventy mile an hour when it's icy. I can't control the geography of that unless I completely change it. Right now, we don't have the accident frequency or the severity to warrant all that extra work.
You're the one redesigning to control the intersection, the intersection you said that doesn't have an issue.
It's, I'm just trying to look at this turning traffic, which is everybody's been, well, that's what they always told me, is everybody's concern was making left-hand turn across T-33.
Who, who told you that?
When I first got here, we were looking at, you said, everybody was just worried about making this left-hand turn and this right-hand turn.
And we talked about, let me do that intersection, and now you're not, but yet you're still... If you're, if you're not going to, if you're going to do it the cheap way, you might as well just leave it.
We're not trying to do it...
It needs resurfaced?
We're trying to do it the best way.
It needs resurfaced, but what you're going to do to that intersection is, I just can't get on board with.
Is there value to pulling a meeting and getting input?
I still have to follow the manuals with federal funds, like I said, I can only do so many different things. And if we do it outside of that, something happens, and the only person liable is me and the board.
You just talked about various options we had at our disposal, you just talked about roundabouts, you just talked about all that stuff.
That's an option.
Then, then don't tell me there aren't any options.
I'm just saying, if you're saying you don't want a stop sign here or something over there, and the plan... there, and the plans call for it, because that's what it calls for in the design of a T-intersection, when you have limited side distance, then no, that's not an option. But if a roundabout would work, we'd have to buy a lot of ground to do it. And will people react to a roundabout in the middle of no place where they've never seen one? You're gonna have a lot more accidents to start off with, but they'll be far less severe. That's the whole thing behind a round... Roundabouts came about to reduce the severity of accidents. That's why they came in there. Does it reduce the frequency? No. Normally, it jacks frequency up, because people are not used to them, they overdrive them, they don't know where to go, they don't watch for yield like they should. Everybody's used to T-intersections. But all I'm trying to do is improve what we've got there on the intersection, and try to eliminate any other things, and not give the people making the left-hand turns a chance to make it without having to worry about someone popping over that hill to the south and not stop. You know, different than if someone put an apple orchard or whatever right on end in the right away, and you couldn't do it, because it's in their property line, you can't see. You have to sign to get around it. That's why we went the way we did. We've kicked this thing around so many different times, Mike, to the point where there's not much we can do with it. And we're trying to do the best we can on it. I can't please everybody, but we're trying to please, and at least make it safer.
But I think that there's some value into at least trying to get some feedback, and maybe getting together as a working group, and try to work out some kind of a compromise. If... And let us look as a board of supervisors at what the different options are, if you have dollar amounts or anything on that side of it. And then invite people who drive through there every day, to see if that would be something that would be acceptable then. How does that affect your...
You're gonna get as many people that says, "We don't care about the traffic coming on T-33, and they should stop, we could go east, because that's where majority traffic is." What about those folks? They're gonna say, "Well, we don't wanna even stop there, we wanna keep on going." You're the minor road, you're coming T-33, that's the minor road.
That was the way it was gonna originally be designed.
You wanna stop at T-33?
All the whole discussion up until today, that was gonna be the discussion.
So you're gonna stop everybody on T-33?
That was the discussion up to today.
I can stop everybody at T-33?
No, no, you were gonna make that... We were gonna, we were gonna change the T.
You were gonna... Yeah, we were gonna take all of that hill off to the south.
And that was the discussion up until today.
And then we started looking at the...
Today is the first, first time I find out that you completely redid the project.
We just got the survey and all the points back in. And we had to take 20 some foot out to get the curve. Not to mention, we'd had to take a lot more to the south to make that curve the way we wanted it. We can only...
Maybe an update would've been good before you send the agreement here with all those changes.
Yes, sir.
Once again, I don't have a problem going forward with this, but it's... I think we need a little bit of time, at least a couple weeks. Bring it together, 101 with David and talk to him.
There's nothing I can really change with it. I don't see a way from an engineering standpoint to change it.
Without increasing costs or just changing period?
Just changing, period. The principles are there, and they make sense, and they're documentable and reinforceable, and it keeps us within guidelines.
And you can resurface it the way it is, correct?
Yeah, we could put an overlay on it, not even have to do it, but that would change the scope of the whole thing.
Oh, yeah. Well, obviously, you just changed the scope dramatically.
No, I didn't. All I did was put a stop sign.
No, you didn't. We completely, completely changed the project scope from the time it was on fire.
We looked at taking this, rounding this out to make the T this way. When you got 25 foot of dirt over here to take its side distance, it became a cost-prohibitive project.
And an update would've been a little useful at that point, we'd have figured that out.
I think that there's, we're limited in what we can do to change it. I guess if we would've had more of an education and more communication, that would've been better, but I don't know. I guess, listening to what you guys are saying back and forth, I guess there's not a whole lot of value in extending out the conversation. Ready to vote? So we can move on. We have a motion on the floor to sign this agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for a federally acted agreement. All in favor, say aye. Aye. opposed?
No.
Two to one? And what I heard, the motion carried. We'll get these signed in a little bit. We got a couple items yet, we'll be done, all right? Compensation board. I tried to talk to, you know, we looked at the, asked for the criteria for putting the new folks on that are interested in being put on there. And so I got that from Sue right after our meeting. And tried to contact the other two gentlemen. I talked to Chuck Webb, I got back with him, and he would qualify under the farm manager, he does prepare leases and those kind of things for Farm Service, he's very knowledgeable in land values and that. And interestingly enough, there's a gentleman by the name of Owen Vermeer that's on here that didn't even know how he got on there. So he's asked to be removed. And so, however, Tim Van Monden is on vacation, so I was unable to visit with him. And so, I would like to honor Owen Vermeer's request to be undominated off of that, and to replace him with Chuck Webb. As far as... It's not motion, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. I understand what you're trying to do, Mark. And you know, it also says in here, you know, let me read you this one line. "A person should not be selected as a member or alternate member of the compensation commission if the person possesses any interest in the proceeding which would cause the person to render a biased decision." Now, you pointed Steve Wonders a couple weeks ago, I let that one go. I think Steve would come with a biased opinion, based on conversations we've had in the last three, four years. And I'm sure Tim Van Monden would have a bias. Chuck Webb, I don't know where Chuck Webb's at. Okay. I understand what you're saying, but really, I think any interest would be their own property. Like, if I was making the decision... No, I think it could be what the project was, Tim. I think that's the intent of the law. That's not the way that it reads. I think that if you're deciding... Are you interpreting the law here without... Is that what you're doing? That's what you're doing? That's what both of us do. Well, we're both doing it, all right? I mean, okay, who's right and who's wrong? That's good, ridiculous. But these are people who came to me, I didn't go looking for them. They all approached me, they heard that we had had openings on here. And if there was anybody else who had, who's on, who's qualified under these circumstances, I would be open to putting them on as well. But these are the three that have approached me and had asked about being also put on the compensation commission, as well as removing Owen off. And so, I don't have any... I didn't go looking for these people and find people that just lined up on one side of the issue to put them on there. I didn't do that. They contacted me. And so, I brought them to the board, and I'm presenting them as qualified under the code to serve in such a commission. Okay. Well, there's a motion on the floor, and a second to point Chuck Webb. All in favor, say aye. Aye. opposed? Aye. Motion's carried. Approve a denim to Mass County employee handbook. I guess, go back. Did you get to remove Owen out there? Did we both remove?
You did, you did have it in your motion.
Yep, that was part of the motion. Okay. Sorry, remove Owen Vermeer, replace Owen Vermeer. You can doctor that a little, that's all right with me. Okay. Approve a denim to Mass County employee handbook.
It's just reflects what you voted on in a previous meeting, to change the handbook holidays and the payout of, well, the option to receive two unused sick leave days, rather than get to pay for them at the end of the year.
Approve or approve? Second. Well, I'll still take my stand of not voting no, because I think we... I think I voted no on the first time around, put the secondary roads under the non-union contracts, that's where I'm at. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. opposed? Aye. Motion carried. Any reports? I was at a meeting at Cargill Indian Hills Regional Development, the lady from Mid-American said that they got the go-ahead on the wind farm southwest of New Sharon, and so that's[1735.72]